You almost did. I almost didn't make it back yesterday. We have Phil with us and we have on Zoom, I think we have Rich Brown and Phil. We're gonna do public comments. Do you have one?
I have some questions. I don't know where the appropriate place is for them. But I'm aware that the MS One is due to be in state sometime in September.
September first.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's been there or not.
Nope. Not yet. We're waiting for the assessor to finalize everything. And we're also waiting for the utility appraisals, which are due by August fifteenth.
Okay, so will that continue to be available before it goes out?
It will come to the board for review at a public meeting.
Okay. I know who's going first because I'd like to talk about that. The way that they'll take that issue.
Yep.
What's going on?
We'll do our best. Between eight fifteen and nine one time gets pretty tight.
Yeah.
And Mr. Brown? Do you have a public comment, Rich?
I'm turning on.
He's turning his thing, yeah.
Richard, you. I'm endeavoring to turn my microphone on. Here we go, yes. The, I have a follow-on question. Will the public be able to view the draft document prior to your meeting when you, when you review it and presumably approve it?
My recollection is that that would not be the case. The document would be available at the meeting for review.
And so when it gets done.
But Dina's sort of shrugging her shoulders, so maybe if it's done early enough. I really can't answer that right now. I don't know. Usually work in progress is not reviewed until it's brought to the board for review at that point.
Okay. What's a good time to ask what the process is for verifying its accuracy?
You can ask at any time. I don't think we have an answer to that right now, so.
Okay.
Just have to wait.
I'm confused by that question.
Well, I will point out that there are a number of people in town who are deeply familiar with with the whole process and would be willing to look to see if anything sticks out and is surprising and get it before, catch it before you sign it and then it becomes a different problem. So I'll make that offer.
Okay, thank you for the offer. Appreciate it.
All right.
And I neglected to mention that we have our favorite Valley news reporter here, Mr. Kenyon. Should you have something for the board hanging out because we're so much fun? Okay, okay.
To find out how old I was.
Yes.
I was shocked if I were that old.
I know I wish the recording was on then.
Every year ago, Brian, starting about fifty-five, I had a couple of addicts wanting to freeze himself.
Oh, math is not your strong suit.
It goes by.
Okay, very good.
I had one other.
Oh, I'm sorry, Phil, yes.
Can somebody briefly explain these through trucking or ordinance? I mean, it's in the discussion of the last round, but I don't think I can explain it anywhere it stands.
Okay.
What its purpose is? What its purpose is, you mean?
Yeah.
It's to protect our roads and keep heavy trucks from, especially commercial ones, from using it as a through road to another job in another town.
Okay, so why do you thought come go through Kenyon, but it's not supposed to go through more?
And wants to go to Kenyon. They should not go Goose Pond Road. They should go the interstate and go around, which takes longer and is more mileage.
They're logging on separate property and bond.
Right. Yes.
Okay, Richard just passed through.
Right, right, yep.
Yeah, we're not allowed to put up gates. But that's a good question. Okay, let's see. Up next, we have minutes from July twenty-fifth meeting. What do we wish to do with the minutes?
Also, Kenyon.
Okay, thank you, Ben and David. Any discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor, Ben said aye.
You did aye.
And Judy, aye. They are approved.
Thank you.
You are well. Okay, next up is the manifest. The manifest in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy cents. Have you all had a chance to review the manifest?
Yes.
Thank you, Ben.
A second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor say aye.
Yeah, aye.
And Judy, aye. We like these little ones.
Yes, yeah. Well, that would, it was all the paving for Acorn Hill, right? Blacktop work. Yep.
I'm gonna jump to the snow removal, to the policies and the one ordinance. We have snow removal and ice control policy, which we did edit significantly. Maintenance of driveway culverts and through trucking. We, last meeting, we're good with both of those without changes. So I think we just need to vote to continue to approve them and then we need to talk about the the one we did change, the snow removal.
Yeah, I don't know what the, on the ones where there weren't changes. I did have a couple of little edits that I passed on.
They were grammatical errors and they did not change the meaning of.
But I don't know if we're not doing anything that we're gonna approve it as it is, but it's already gonna reapprove it and I would.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Dino, while you go away, guy, this guy was doing what, now, favor because he was cleaning, tearing, brushing, cleaning, standing by his lane on the corner, do it all in rows.
Nice.
Jeff went back and picked it all up and. Kevin says, boy, where's Dino when you need her?
Oh, dear.
So the maintenance of the driveway and culverts and the no through trucking with the addition of the edits of David's, I will move them as being reapproved. So your, the original, okay. And Judy, aye. So did I get a, David, you seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay. So it will show the original date of approval, which I believe most of them are two thousand fourteen. And it will then show the date that we reapproved with those edits.
Yeah, I put the review at the end just because it didn't, you didn't change it.
Okay, and the last one, the snow removal and ice control policy, I got it, is greatly simplified. We took out a lot of the detail of if it's this kind of a storm on this road, it's gonna be this kind of an hourly or whatever plowing and gave the authority to the road agent to decide what needs to be done, plan with some general guidelines. That revised policy is available for people to look at. Thank you, David, for working on that. It was thought and Dina, we've got that done up, so it's in pretty good shape. Anyone that wants to see it is welcome to. I would be happy to move that as it has been edited and revised.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Since it was modified so substantially, do we need to give people a chance to review it and we wait and pass it?
I, I think.
It's not an ordinance. If it was an ordinance, you would need to have a public hearing.
Yes.
But because you've discussed it at more than one meeting, actually, this is your third or fourth. People have had plenty of time to add their comments.
All those in favor?
Yeah, aye. David, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, so this one, this one, this one. Okay, I've got those three in front of me. I will sign it. We have, we have community care of lime. We have a common use lime, common use application for the Upper Valley Thrives Health and Lowness Fair. You've had a little bit of difficulty getting kind of the paperwork in place and what we need. The only thing I saw, and I know the use of a lime common continues to kind of be an issue, but we don't have what concrete parking, we have a theoretical parking plan. But we do have a certificate of liability. Dina, what, what else might be? I think Sean has talked to them about.
Well, Sean, yeah, and they did, you know, they've done this for a couple of years. I'm sure they'll end up with a great parking plan. Part of it is the vendors.
Yes.
And we need to, we need a list of vendors. And last year, they, I believe, CCL covered all the vendors under their insurance. But you know, I have reservations about that. I don't know, you know, if a vendor is, are they selling things? Are they just showing things? You know, if they're selling things, they certainly need insurance if they're, they shouldn't be anyways.
Can we direct Jordan to recontact them and say that we, we've looked at this? It's still missing some items and please get them in by our next meeting? Well, this is coming right up.
Yeah, you, you, I mean, you're not gonna stop them. At least, they didn't give us a list until last minute last year and you didn't, you didn't make them not do it. So, you know, I could see you approving it with the understanding that they will submit the appropriate stuff that Jordan asked for. And that would be reasonable because they do have a lot of organizing to do.
Yeah, they do.
And it's not very far away.
What do we wish to do?
Don't you?
Thank you, Dan.
Also, thank you.
Thank you, David. All those in favor, we need the proviso that we get the required vendor list and insurance information before opening date.
Yeah.
And Judy, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana, and thank Jordan for her efforts. Well, now we have the Darknessy Way Review Partial Exemption and the two thousand two agreement. Person we were hoping to speak with apparently is gonna be out of town for an extended period, but I wonder if we shouldn't let them know that we have been advised that they are not entitled to an exemption.
Well, why I put that on there is because I did wanna bring it back up because I did want you guys to realize that you have a previous agreement with them. And it involves many different things. And one of them is the assessment and the percentage off that they get because of the educational side of it, so I would suspect that if you're gonna make a change, it's gonna be after you redo this and that's gonna be too late for this, you know, this tax period. Even if you meet with them in September, October, it's, it's, you know, we have to have, we have to have the MS One stuff done. So I mean, it's a signed agreement. It went through their legal. It went through our legal.
And what came though, like two thousand two or something? It's been a long time.
It has been a long time.
Did you give us a copy?
It wasn't that. I did. I sent you one. I don't know if it's in here. I sent one quite a while ago. Um.
Did you resend it to me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I'm concerned because I know this comes up, we can't, and we need to make a decision and our assessor has recommended that they don't qualify. And I think that's really important that we follow up.
But if we have an agreement, we need to see what the agreement is.
That's right.
Or we can't, we can't.
Or we have to do that.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, if you didn't have a signed agreement, I wouldn't be saying this, but you know, that's the important part is, and I don't, I wasn't even sure if you guys all knew that, but.
Well, I knew that at one time there was one, but I wasn't sure it was in that because there had been changes that seemed to not be what I thought the agreement said.
Oh, yeah.
Been a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
And I wonder what happens when you have a prior select board who agreed to tax them in a way that isn't permitted under the law.
I can always.
That's not true. It's not that it's not permitted under the law. You can, you can have a pilot agreement with almost any, any group or entity that you want to. You have a pilot with Great Hydro. So you can have.
Pay an annual tax.
That's correct. And it's a written agreement. Now, this just happens to include a lot of other stuff having to do with ambulance bills and things like that.
Well, we should take a look. Please put it on next time's agenda.
But it is time to review it.
And we might wanna let them know, I think they already know, but make sure they know that the assessor feels that they do not, that they no longer qualify.
Yeah, Mr. George Jouskier, I think that's how you say his name. He is aware of that and we have discussed that and I know they've been meeting to talk about things and then to get ready to meet with you guys.
Okay. That one is on the front burner. Okay, we've done the policies and the ordinance, land use change tax. We have three land use change taxes. One for one thirty-two Whipple Hill Road in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. A reminder to anyone who's listening doesn't understand or reuse these minutes later, that land use change tax is triggered when you have a property under the reduced taxation for the land use. And then you, it no longer qualifies for a number of reasons. Then you owe ten percent of the value of the land as a tax comes to the town. Did I say it right?
You did. That was perfect.
Okay, so we should vote, I think, and approve these and then sign the paperwork. And I.
Yes, you should do each one separately in a monetary amount. Your first one is Ben Whipple Hill, right?
Yeah.
And the amount, it's on the front, very front.
One thousand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And so the reason for that, does it, can you see it?
You looking for what?
One, it's taken out.
It'll say right on the front page, right there. This is, this is, she's, she had an over ten acre lot. She subdivided it. That's her section that she's keeping. I think it's five point something, maybe acres. So some of it, right, some of it's already out of current use because that's where her house is. The rest of it is coming out of current use. All right.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, David. Those in favor say aye.
Yeah, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, that's approved. The next.
Whipple Hill one, we're approving the seventeen fifty-one.
Yeah, seventeen fifty at one thirty-two Whipple Hill. The next one is one thirteen Whipple Hill. And this one no longer has ten acres in common ownership, so it is also subject to the tax.
And this is the other lot that was subdivided off the first one that I described. So that's the total amount. That's why theirs is considerably more.
Yeah. This one is a tax of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. So the value of the lot fair market value is what I call it, is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. I will move this one.
Second.
Thank you, David.
Yeah. There's aye.
Judy, aye. This one is approved. And the last one we have is ninety-one Splint Hill Road. Property has had buildings built on current use land, therefore it is disqualified.
Right.
So the value is set at one thousand four hundred dollars for this land now. So the change tax would be a hundred and forty dollars.
It was a, a little shed that was built and they forgot to take it out of current use.
Okay, well put.
They'll land under it.
What do we wish to do with this one? Thank you, Ben.
So good.
Thank you, David. All those in favor? Judy, aye. This one is approved.
Super.
Okay, now we have an intent to cut on Pyco Road.
How do you pronounce? I never know if it's Pyco or Peacon.
Pyco. If you live in Lyme, it's Pyco.
So Ben, could you have a look at this? There's some question as to whether or not the estimated amount was correct. And then I'm not sure.
Ben, it's not the amount. It's actually that he wrote it in as tons and you have to do.
Of tons, that board.
Yeah, well, I don't know why, whether Wayne just wrote it in the wrong place or what, but it's Wayne Pike who's hauling all this stuff out. I mean, that's something we can address after.
Submit it the way it is and then if the state doesn't accept it, we can resubmit.
Absolutely. We can call him and have him give us a estimated board foot, right. Me either.
Well, let's, let's bring this up at the next meeting. Let's contact him in the meantime and see if we can get a a better measurement.
Yeah, find out.
Well, you can't, you can't wait. Well, you can, I guess. He's just, he's just gonna go ahead and start, though. He's not gonna wait, just so you know. He didn't have to.
Cut logs or if you cut firewood?
He's not cutting firewood, no. He's just cutting logs and hauling them out. That was my understanding, but well, I'll ask him. I'll ask him.
You know, Jesse, if I know one, one ton of truckloads logs.
I'll just call Wayne, say, I need it filled out correctly.
One thousand four.
Right.
Okay.
So we don't sign it now?
I don't think we should sign it if we don't.
It's not allowed to be used weight as the measure?
Yeah.
Typically, you know, no, it was, that's fine. It's a one ton truck. Fill the logs, that's what he said.
Right.
You know, you can measure things in lots of different ways. The body, human body length, certain.
Yes, but the, the state wants it done a certain way, but you know, down here, I don't know why he didn't write down here where it gives the choice of tons, so.
Well, he's not measuring it tons. He's measuring it thousand four feet, but the volumes that'll fill it one ton.
I doubt.
Well, it's good.
Oh, my goodness.
Then we have a report of wood cut from sixty-three Pinnacle.
Yeah.
Property of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. We're making money today, guys. Okay. So this is for the splits, sixty-three Pinnacle. Ben's having a look at it.
Very much worth.
Uh-uh, no, very little.
We just sign it? Do we need to vote?
It's a warrant, so you need to vote, yeah.
I'll move it. Thank you, David. All those in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Thank you. Judy, aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on this fascinating agenda is the solar exemptions. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine solar exemptions. They've all been reviewed by our assessor and he's approved and all. So I can read the property locations. I would suggest that we approve them all in one motion. We have twenty-two Pony Hill Lane, two sixteen Orchard Road, two thirty-four River Road, eleven Union Street, eighty-three Pinnacle Road, twenty views land, three oh five Baker Hill Road, eight Houston and eighty-three Frenchland Hill Road.
I'll move them.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Yeah.
And Judy, aye. Those are all approved. Ben, I do believe we have.
We have the sign.
Yes, you do.
We are going shortly to go into non-public session.
Yeah, I just had a question. I think going to New York's like the weeks, not, you can see meetings on the smokes. You all can train in Johnr. Drop into a different room. I'm just working on this piece about the business property and a couple of things I wanted to follow up on was that there seems to be some confusion on what happens if they don't meet the deadline. Then town brings in contract events. In the process of getting a contract.
We, before town meeting last year, we reached out and talked to someone who said they could do it in the fall. And I believe that Dina has since been in touch with them.
Yeah.
And they would be ready to go shortly after that deadline. I'm not sure that we have an exact date.
Not off the top of my head. No.
So then what, so then Smith would then have the option of reimbursing not have problems.
That's my understanding.
But then it wouldn't, that's what people present that are concerned that you're not taking the property away.
Not our intent to take that property. No one knows.
They're proposed on the lead. You have to go to court to do that. But our, this is like a tax lien. It doesn't jump ahead of other leads on property. There's none at all. Probably not a reimbursement. We don't have to talk to our council on that.
The intent isn't to take the property. It's just to get it down, so. Probably the town is hopeless.
And I mean, honestly, if we spend money to clean it up, we would hope to be reimbursed. Maybe not immediately, but a lot of property. So we don't really Maybe not immediately, but then probably be, so we don't really. Well, we might decide to move forward on, you know, the place that time.
What if the ice not, but. I look at the floor records.
Yes.
And it seems like it's other select boards to kind of kick the game.
Well, and we tried to do that.
Yeah. Yep.
Not all of them. When we get, we get residents in here, they're like, record, they're adamant about. What are you doing about this? That I'll have to talk to them about that.
Yeah.
Very important.
And that I'm sure they're even kind of needed. From. You go and you have the property and then you get it, like it's stuck. And then that stuff has your advantage. And you sold or scrapped or whatever, and then that goes against the bill.
Right, the person that cleans it up is the one who does.
That's the total south of the.
Right, at that which point, if more money is owed to the cleanup, it becomes their, their, uh. Duty, and that's what the means for.
That's correct.
And if there's, um, court and court process, um, perhaps to that. If, uh, those trucks are worth four hundred thousand dollars, they're not.
They're not, but if they were, then that excess would have to be returned.
Okay.
Yep. And.
We got your eye on.
Swear about it when you. And preventing the court order that town. Two years ago, wanted to be able to find them for not to get the way the judge said, no, it couldn't.
Well, one, one of the judgments was, but the, there was another judgment that did allow the town to find.
Judgment said we could.
Right.
I don't believe.
They chose not to.
We did not.
Chose not to.
And there's some environmental concerns about the property, especially the Dorchester Road property that tends to be leaking into.
We don't know.
That's, that's our next question.
Most of the phone calls that come to the office are concerns about. Possible environmental contamination there. I do know that. We get.
In the brush.
In the brush. Correct, correct.
You know, in the land under.
But the state hasn't tested.
This.
We don't know.
We don't know. We.
Lots of, we, no.
Yeah.
Thank you. I talked to Ken Williams.
Instant. Yes.
Thirty-first. You're not looking at someone coming in September first, you.
I don't think we have a date, but, I mean, it.
Legally, you could.
Legally, we could do that, that's right. I think that when it, on August thirty-first, when. Cleanup has not heard sufficiently to be called a cleanup, then we could. I think at that point, we contact our person, see what we can do on them, and.
Well, the first thing you do is you get on the property and look at, see what's left. And, and then you'd have to make a decision from there.
And that person that, that we contacted, or that company that we contacted before. Came out, it was winter time, it was February, I believe, January or February. Was not allowed on the property, so was only able to look at what was visible from the road.
Actually, technically, we're allowed on the property, but the property on it wasn't.
Correct, okay, that's correct, and we're allowed on the property technically, but they have told us we may not.
So the board can go there on the September one and decide to clean up.
I think, oh, yes, yes, yes.
Or any court over the board can want to let me.
We have tried not to. Increase the aggravation.
All right, well, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your consideration, Phil.
So, if the payment you were asking to the streetway is going to be renewed, I think the value of the item is going to depend with the software. Particularly wondering what is the end of the city in the purpose of the streetway.
Yeah. Right. I would think that they.
Well, it's not a payment in lieu, just so you know.
Right, it isn't now.
Now, and it, so, it could become one. Um. But, but yeah, that's a, that's a big top, topic.
Dana. I think, I think that the existing agreement is public.
Absolutely, the existing agreement is a. Once, once a contract is signed, that's, you can see it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, just get a hold of Dina or Jordan.
I'll just send it to you. Oh, my gosh, I don't know. I'd have to look it up because it's multiple properties because of the different ski hills and stuff, but.
It could make a big difference.
They do pay taxes, because a lot of people think they don't, but they do pay taxes.
Thank you. All right, bye-bye. So it is ten thirty-eight. And we are going to go into non-public session, RSA ninety-one dash eight, one, three, Roman numeral two, little letter A, personnel. And at ten thirty-eight.
I'm assuming.
Thank you, David. Judy, I. Bye, Phil, take care. Yep. And.
Let me go see if Emily's here.
There.
Yeah, I'll go see if Emily's here.
Okay.